I'm pleased today that we have pastors Tywo and Grace Habomo of Rock Point Church here with us. They will be providing our invocation. That will be followed by the pledge, which I will lead. For those of you willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for life. We thank you for your faithfulness toward every single one of us here. We thank you, God, for Cobb County and just your faithfulness toward this county and all you've done over the years. We bring this meeting before you. We pray for our Cobb County Commissioners that you will fill them with the wisdom they need, oh God, as they make important decisions today. We ask you to shine your light upon them, God. We ask you to grant them strength and discernment. And you remind them, God, that they are here to serve, God. And as they serve our county, God, we ask you, Lord God, that you bless their work. Pray for everyone here today, that you will shine your light upon them, that you will glorify your name in all of their lives. We thank and we bless you in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor, for the invocation, and I see your wife here. I didn't know if you both would be up here, but it's good to see you here as well. Our meeting is now officially called to order. With our zoning hearing, I will turn things over to our zoning manager, John Peterson, to walk us through today's agenda.
Thank you, Chair. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. We would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if there's anyone opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand up and raise their hand so they can be counted for the official record. After recognizing the applicant and any opposition, both parties will be asked to come forward and be sworn in so they could present testimony to the board. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a process to reserve your time, and there's not a rebuttal process, so you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. In addition, if there's more than one person who has to speak on an issue, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to their front for additional comments or questions. And after that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. Madam Chair and Board, I did get a request last night. The applicant for other business item number 18 of 2023, John Seferi Road LLC, they would like to withdraw this application without prejudice, Madam Chair and Board.
John, can you repeat the case number, please?
That's other business item number 18. District two.
Eighteen. Okay, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner Richardson.
A motion to withdraw OB-18 from the agenda without prejudice.
Second.
I'm going to just abstain from this vote, I did from the prior matter because of my affiliation with one of the parties, so I'll let you conduct the vote, Commissioner Richardson.
Discussion called a question. The measure passes four zero with Chairwoman Cupid abstaining.
Thank you. And just for clarification, if those in the audience, I'm abstaining out of conflict of interest.
Thank you. There are a number of cases on today's agenda which have been continued or held, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-55 of 2022, Kenneth B. Clary. This case was continued until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-55 will not be heard today. And just as a side note, the applicant did submit a letter to withdraw this at the Planning Commission next month, so when the board sees this the month, it will be withdrawn. Resounding case Z-60 of 2022, Brands Acquisition Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-60 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-65 of 2022, Dray Pack Investments LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-65 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-67 of 2022, SMB Investments Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the July 5, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-67 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-8 of 2023, Tommy's Express by Northgate. This case was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-8 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-9 of 2023, Aguas Vivas Centro Familiar de Eteración Incorporated. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-9 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-11 of 2023, Jose Luis Cardenas. This case was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-11 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-12 of 2023, Fernando Chavera, Chavera was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-12 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-13 of 2023, Matthew C. Flornoy. This case was continued by the Planning Commission until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-13 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-14 of 2023, Brand Properties LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-14 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-15 of 2023, SDP Acquisitions LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-15 of 2023 will not be heard today. And lastly, on the printed agenda, SLEP-4 of 2023, Ray Murphy. This case was held by the Planning Commission until the June 6, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP-4 of 2023 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, I do have three cases in which the applicants have requested to be continued. I did get these in late, so that's why they're not on the printed agenda. First one is other business item number 13 of 2023, Edward M. Galancy Jr. The applicant wants 30 more days to work on their application, Madam Chair and Board, so the staff would ask you to continue other business item number 13 until your June 20th hearing date.
Yes, John. Commissioner Gambrell.
This is the first I'm hearing about this, so I will go ahead and grant the extension to June 30th, or June 20th of 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second? I presume, you said you will grant it, I presume that's a motion? Okay, so we'll recognize Commissioner Gambrell's statement as a motion, Richardson as second it. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Next case that's requesting a continuance is other business item number 23 of 2023, Iglesia Missinera. The applicant does need some more time to work on this, Madam Chair and Board, so the staff would ask the board to continue other business item number 23 to your June 20th hearing date.
Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield?
Did you say the 20th?
The 20th.
20th, that's what I have. I make a motion that OB-23 be continued to the June 20th Board of Commissioners zoning hearing.
Second. Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Okay, the last one that's requesting a continuance is other business item number 25 of 2023, CMC Custom Homes LLC. The applicant does want a continuance for 30 days, Madam Chair and Board, to continue to work on their application, so the staff would ask the board to continue OB-25 until your June 20th hearing date.
Okay. Commissioner Gambrell.
I make a motion that we continue OB-25 to the June 30th hearing date.
Second. Is there any discussion? Do you have a question, Commissioner Sheffield? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Commissioner, did you say the 30th or the 20th?
It should have, I should have said the 20th. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any additional discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Before we start the consent agenda, I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please turn the volume off on your cell phone. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and presentation. And any person wishing to speak before the Board Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they made a campaign contribution to the Board Commissioners within the last two years for $250 or more. Additional information about this requirement is located on the table in the back of the room. And lastly, I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for May 16, 2023. First case on consent is LUP-7, Sandy Cloe, who requests a temporary land use permit renewal to allow an artist's studio in the storage of art prints in Land Lot 336 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Trail Road, north of the intersection of Trail Road and Midway Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no signs. Number two, no on-street parking. Number three, no outdoor storage. And number four, two seasonal employees only. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP-7? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP-8, Andrew Beckhold, requests a temporary land use permit to allow a photography studio in Land Lot 871 of the 17th District. The property is located on the west side of Old Virginia Court, north of Terre Haute Road. The Planning Commission recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, customers must park in the driveway. Number two, by appointment only. Number three, no exterior signs. And number four, fire department comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP-8? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business cases on the consent agenda. First case is other business item number 17 of 2023, which is to consider a variance to Mapleton Form Based Code to allow a three-story building in lieu of a two-story building and to amend the stipulations for other business item number 44 of 2019 to allow 16 and 20-foot wide townhome widths for Create Homes LLC regarding property located at the northwest intersection of Fontaine Road and Carroll Circle in Land Lot 35 of the 17th District. The Planning Commission recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, allowance of 16, 18, and 20-foot wide townhome units. Number two, allowance of two-story and three-story townhome units. And number three, all previous stipulations and conditions to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 17? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Madam Chair, may I add?
Please.
Okay. Thank you, John. I would like to revise condition number two of the Planning Commissioner comments to read, allowance of three-story townhome units. And also, please include the following conditions. To form the creation of a landscape review committee composed of the applicant, the Mapleton Improvement Coalition, and the county staff to review the exterior landscaping with particular emphasis on evergreen plantings along the western property line between the new development and the adjacent home at 868 Fontaine Road. Number two, water tables on the side of the buildings are to be a minimum of nine feet. Final elevations and landscape, landscaping plans are to be approved by the district commissioner, and all other recommendation, comments and recommendations not otherwise in conflict.
Is the applicant amenable to those conditions that were just read? Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, next item on consent is other business item number 20 of 2023, which is to consider a reduction of minimum lot size from 20,000 square feet to 14,384 square feet for NRD LLC by John E. Ramsey, President. The property is located on the east side of Old Concord Road in Land Lot 352 of the 17th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet. Number two, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. Number three, lot size approved to be 14,384 square feet. And number four, side setback variance approved to be five feet. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 20? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number 21 of 2023 is to consider a reduction of minimum lot size from 40,000 square feet to 25,480 square feet, and for existing side setback variance for R. Michael Dupree. The property is located at the southwest corner of Fowler Drive and Pine Manor in Land Lot 444 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, lot size reduced to 25,480 square feet. Number two, approved for existing variances as shown on the site plan received April 6, 2023. Number three, stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet. Number four, water and sewer comments contained in the other business packet. And number five, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. Is the applicant present? Applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 21? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Okay, Commissioner, thank you. Yes, good morning. There was a mix-up on a comment, and I spoke to the applicant prior to the meeting, and for the record, they're agreeable to adding the other water meter for the lot, two lots. So I just wanted to, and Mr. Dupree, you're good with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Is that just a clarifying comment, or are we?
Well, it's to add it to the steps.
Well, it's actually in the water comments. The water comments that I read in, it says parcels will be required to have independent water meters and sewer taps. So that's in the water comments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, last item on consent is other business item number 26 of 2023, which is to consider amending the site plan for Sigma Holdings LLC regarding resoning applications Z-47 to 2008. The property located on the west side of Dean Road, north of Jamison Road, in Land Lots 59 and 60 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received April 11, 2023, with the district commissioner approving minor modifications. Number two, stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet. Number three, Cobb County DOT comments contained in the other business packet. And number four, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 26? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes the consent agenda, Madam Chair and Board.
Okay. Commissioner Gambrell?
Yes, John, I'd like to add OB-3 to the consent agenda.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and read that one in. Other business item number three of 2023 is to consider amending the site plan for Mills Veterinary Property and Rehabilitation Center regarding resoning application Z-9 of 2020 for property located on the west side of North Kyle Parkway, south of Third Army Road, in Land Lot 2 of the 20th District. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number three? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
John, I know there is an email exchange between Dr. Mills and I. Do you want to go ahead and read those stipulations in, or would you like me to?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and read those 10 conditions.
Yes, please.
All right. Staff would recommend approval, subject to the site plan received by the zoning division on May 5, 2023, for this use and this use only, as stated in other business item number three of 2023. Number two, letter dated May 3, 2023, from Michelle Mills. Number three, building shall not exceed 5,481 square feet and shall be three-sided brick, stackstone, or a combination thereof. Number four, deceleration lane shall be constructed to Cobb or GDOT requirements, in addition to DOT comments and recommendations. Number five, water and sewer comments with the use of a veterinary clinic for ERU allocations. Number six, fire department comments and recommendations. Number seven, stormwater, stormwater management comments and recommendations. Number eight, site plan review comments and recommendations. Number nine, any change shall come back to the Board of Commissioners for approval. And number 10, district commissioner to approve the final building renderings and landscape plans.
Okay, thank you. And the applicant's amenable to those conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
And I also have her email stating this as such, and I will file that with the clerk. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to add OB-3 of 2023 to the consent agenda.
Second. Is there any discussion? All right, call the question. The motion carries five zero, and congratulations.
Good work.
Are there any other additions or changes needed? Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised. Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Anyone here as part of the consent agenda? You are free to leave with the disposition of your case, or you're free to hang out and watch some other cases be heard today. It's completely up to you. We'll wait a couple minutes for the audience to clear. Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to the agenda. First case we're going to hear today is resounding case Z-10 of 2023, Joseph and Jeanette Gunderson, who requests rezoning from R-20 to LRO for an office in Land Lot 82 of the 20th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Kemperidge Road, northwest of Mars Hill Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to rezoning case Z-10? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant, would the applicant please come forward and be sworn in to present
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Jeanette Gunderson. We bought this house on Kemperidge Road, which is a future land use NAC notated property. I had actually emailed back and forth with the commissioner just to make sure that this, my insurance agency would be the type of business that we would want in the Neighborhood Activity Center. She said it did seem to fit the platform desired. So we are, we worked with DOT. We've worked on the parking lot egress watershed. I've got the approval for health and environment for the septic. And so all that has been approved and worked out. And then, so the business hours would be from like 8:30 to 6:00 PM at the latest. I have two other employees. There's hardly any other walk-in traffic. It would be like one person a month at the most, so nobody really comes to see their insurance agent. We just do it over the phone these days. And so this is a very, very busy, fast-moving road. Unfortunately, it's really not like a family environment. It's five doors down from the fire station and the tech office, across the street from Walmart, from Mavis Tire, which is constant dinging, honking horns and impact drills run all the time. It's across the street also from a car wash, which has very loud volume. So I think it definitely is moving its way towards a commercial perspective. There are no changes to the structure itself. We left it as three-bedroom, one and a half bathroom. Those will be my offices. There is no compromise to the exterior of it. All we've done is take the home that was in disrepair and repaired it, roof, windows, you know, they were cracked, everything, trying to make it a nice, beautiful home. We've talked to our neighbors, and they are really good with us being there. They have no concerns with the people that rent next to us. The only opposition we had had was from a company, a group of people that were trying to do a commercial assemblage. They want to do like big three stories, and we're in the middle, so they had been opposing that, but they didn't show up today, so that's a good thing. And I'm really looking forward to running my agency, you know, this little house for many years to come to be a family business, and we're looking to establish a long-lasting and become a thriving member of the Cobb Acworth Business Community and Association. And then I didn't know if you needed to see where our little house is with all the different commercial right around it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of the applicant? Okay, not hearing any. I'll turn things over to our commissioner. You're free to have a seat as we discuss the matter. Thank you. Don't go too far in case we call you back up.
Oh, no, she's good. I'm sorry, I should have had John ask for any opposition, because we could have put this on consent. I think this is appropriate for this location, and we welcome you to this area and hope you are very successful. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Z-10 of 2023 with the following conditions, and these were as approved by the Planning Commission. Site plan received by the zoning division on April 16, 2023, on file in the zoning division, with district commissioner approving minor modifications. Variance as detailed in the zoning comments, fire department comments and recommendations, water and sewer division comments and recommendations, stormwater management division comments and recommendations, Department of Transportation comments and recommendation, and hours of operation to be Monday through Friday from 8:00 AM until 6:30 PM.
Second. Are there any questions or comments? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, moving into special land use permits on today's agenda. SLEP-3 of 2023, Alexandria Holdings Group Incorporated, requests a special land use permit for used auto sales in Land Lot 37 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Veterans Memorial Highway, west of Pocket Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP-3? Two. Okay, let the record show there's two people here opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
Good morning. My name is John Hannah. I am the owner of 621 Veterans Memorial Highway, southwest in Mapleton. I bought the property back 2012, and at that time, I I bought the property back 2012, and at that time, I, it was a car, car lot, used car lot. And I ended up moving in there and established my car, car business there until 2019. 2019, I ended up leasing the property to some tenants, who we signed a lease for three years. And then they started practicing the same business, which is used car sales. This property has been zoned as a grandfather end since 1970 for a used car dealership, for the same purpose. 2000, and so the new tenants moved in 2019. They were there for, last year, that's when their lease agreement was over. At that time, they called me before the lease, two months before the lease agreement, and they asked me they want to extend the lease. So we agreed to extend the lease. Then a month later, after we signed the new lease agreement, the tenant called me, and they said that we need to talk to you about something important. And so I called him back, and they said that, you know, the tenant has stage IV cancer, and if we can terminate the lease. So I agreed to terminate the lease. I asked him to stay a couple more months until I find a new tenant to move in. I found the new tenant. I signed the lease. The new tenant went to the Cobb County to get the business license. Cobb County Business License said there was no business for three years. So I called the tenant. So I called the tenant. I asked him to show me all the proofs. And they said, we have the dealer license from the state. We have everything, but we don't have a business license. So they said, they already moved out at that time. So they said, we're gonna, we're gonna go back, and we're gonna see what's the problem. So they went back. They talked to the business license. They paid the taxes for the three, for the previous three years. So the business license people collected the tax for three years that was missing. So at that time, the new tenant went to the zoning department and asked him, hey, you know, this is a car lot, and we're just continuing, continuing the use. They said, you need to get a business license from the business office. The business office said, you need to get a letter from the zoning department. So they kept sending me back and forth between them. And at that time, you know, the zoning said the easiest way to do is just to go get a special use permit, even though it's always been a car dealership since the day I bought it, 2012, and I used to run my business out of there. And it's been a car lot since 1970. It was never other use before that. So I said, okay, if this is how it's gonna work, I need to go and file another application and just do it everything the way you guys want me to do. So I'm here today asking you guys to get a special use permit for a, for a used car lot that has always been there. I mean, the car, the car lot is surrounded by other dealerships, by a tire shop, by a car wash, by another dealership, and a junkyard, and a body shop, transmission shop. The whole thing is the same use. So I'm not asking for any changes to the use. It's always been a car lot, and this is the way I'm asking you guys to approve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of the application? Okay, seeing none, we'll have opposition. Just keep in mind, if there's more than one person, that you have 10 minutes in total.
Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I co-chair the zoning committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. As you know, and as you can see from the, from the GIS map, this area of Mableton is saturated with used car sales. This property is, has, has been the subject of code enforcement actions in the, in the past. It is not pleasing to the eye as you drive by. Until, until this application was filed, this fence was immediately adjacent to the, to the sidewalk with this green tarp covering the fence. But most importantly, this property does not have the one acre of paved parking required for a used car lot. And that is, that has been identified as, by the staff, as a variance that would need to be granted if this SLUP were approved. Also behind the fence, you, if you were able to magnify this, you would see that not only was this particular tenant in business to sell used cars, but they were also painting cars and doing other auto body work. As a matter of fact, when I got my car inspected at the car wash across the street in March for the emission inspection, I could smell paint as I, as I was on the other side of this five-lane highway. This is not a regular rezoning case. This is a special land use permit, and for that, there are 15 criteria which must be considered. Criteria number one and number five has to do with the impact on the neighborhood in the area and the value of the surrounding property. We believe that there will be an adverse impact. The saturation of used car dealers hurts the ability of other businesses in the area to attract customers to other types of businesses. This is not a matter of, oh, there are just too many of these businesses in the area. It's a matter of saturation. Approval of this application would not support the ongoing redevelopment efforts in this area. Beyond efforts, they're reality. Less than 800 feet away, the Mableton Walk Shopping Center is the recipient of a multimillion-dollar rehabilitation, probably the biggest investment on Veterans Memorial Highway in decades, certainly in the time that I've lived in Mableton. This is an unattractive property with no plan for aesthetic upgrades or improvements. That's at least what Mr. Hannah told us when we spoke with him before the Planning Commission hearing. SLUP criteria number three, whether or not the proposed use will result in a nuisance. We think that it will. There are multiple, there have been multiple code enforcement complaints related to this property. There are none open at the moment, but there have been in the past. Recent uses of body shop emitting fumes that escape to other properties is not allowed by your ordinance. Criteria number six, number 10, whether or not adequate provisions are made for parking and traffic considerations, and whether or not limits are placed on commercial and business deliveries. There are not adequate provisions for parking, traffic, and deliveries. Customers routinely park on the sidewalk, and car haulers can't, can't enter this small property. So they unload in the middle of Veterans Memorial Highway. You can see here that the ramp for this, for this car hauler is down. Frequently, employees or drivers of these, these vehicles have to enter the drive lanes in order to get out of the cab and get to the back of the vehicle to get the cars off the car haulers. Then there's the matter of a car being backed into the center lane and somehow getting into the travel lane and getting into the car lot. That there's not been a tragedy here is just a miracle. SLUP criteria number 11, whether, whether there is an adequate landscape plan? No, there's no landscape plan, not, not one at all. Landscaping would certainly make this property more attractive, but in, in all likelihood, it would reduce the paved area by even more. Although most of the properties are auto-related now, that will not always be the case. And each property needs to buffer its uses against its neighbors and provide a pleasing appearance. SLUP criteria number 12, whether or not the public health, safety, and welfare are adversely affected? Yes, they are. Cars parked on the sidewalk cause pedestrians to walk in the roadway. Car haulers in, in the middle lanes block sight lanes and endanger motorists. And the lives of the car haulers are endangered as they work in the middle of a five-lane highway. For all these reasons, we encourage you and urge you to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers in opposition that desire to speak? Okay, seeing none, Commissioner Sheffield, I'm going to turn things over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start with Jessica. Good morning, Jessica.
Good morning.
Can you share with us, or can you share with us the context regarding the business license? The applicant testified that there was some type of miscommunication with respect to the business license. And I guess his assumption is since the car lot has always been used as a used car lot, then a business license would not be required. So can you fill in?
No, that's absolutely not correct. You know, a business license is always required for any business operating in Cobb County. It needs to be renewed annually. There is a time period by which if the business license hasn't been, or if the use hasn't been continued, of course, from a zoning standpoint, that it may need to come back before zoning, and John can speak to that if there are any questions. But yes, they do need to renew annually.
Thank you. And regarding the other lots that's adjacent to this, can you confirm if there is a business license for that property as well?
I don't know offhand, but I'll be happy to reach out to business licensing and confirm.
Okay, no, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you, Jessica. I'd like to have the applicant to come up, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are you also the owner for parcels 609 and 633?
I don't know the parcel number, which one?
Oh, I'm sorry, the address, excuse me.
The one next door, yes.
Yes, okay. Because in, in looking at the petition, it appears that you signed the petition for both of those addresses?
It's a, it's a, I mean, it's a car business, and they have a, they have a business license on it.
Okay, but you signed the petition?
For the next door?
Yeah. Well, petition to support your application for today.
Yes, because I own, I own that property. So I own the parcel next door, which is another business, which is, they have a business license, and I have it.
Okay, because typically, excuse me, typically with the, with the petition, that's for signatures to show support of your neighbors. And I was just curious to know if you had spoken with any of your neighbors together?
Yeah, they don't oppose it. Yes, they don't oppose it.
Right, but they're not, their signatures are not reflected on the petition, and I was just wondering if there was a reason you didn't have written?
Well, I signed, I signed because I own that property, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thanks. So for the parcel at 651, is that currently a? 621 and 633, is that currently, are those property addresses currently car lots?
621, 621 is the subject property, yes.
Okay, all right. And is that currently leased by one car dealership or two? Two different owners?
621 is the property that we're trying to get the special use permit for it, because it's like, like five, six different parcels together. The county never, like, assembled them. They just lifted at just parcels. So each, you know what I'm saying, the old, 621 is the subject property, basically.
Right, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is to determine how many used car tenants you have on this property? Excuse me, hold on, outside of the subject parcel?
Oh, just one. One more next door has got a separate address, separate property.
So then that's two separate, okay.
Yes, so that, this 621, this is a one acre, which meets the minimum requirement. I already submitted the survey, so it is, it is, it meets the, the code for the county.
Well, it's one acre, but you're required to have one acre of pavement. And you have a structure that sits on that property, which reduces the pavement requirement by approximately, by approximately 2,000 feet. And that's why you're asking for variance request.
Okay, I didn't, okay.
All right. With respect to the property on Pocket, so in looking at the screen to the far right, where it tapers off out of the screen, yeah, thank you, Cornelius, are those vehicles owned by your tenant?
Well, this is an old, these are old picture. I have the, the new picture, the current picture.
No, no, that's fine, but what I'm getting at is whether or not that property is being utilized by your tenant.
Yes, by the tenant, yes.
Okay, and do you own that property?
Yes.
Okay, that property is not owned by DOT?
No, it's the one on the corner. If you go to, can we, if we go to the corner, I don't know if, yes, you see that property on that, that rounds around Pocket Road? This is owned by the DOT. That's, and they, they, they've been leasing it to, to multiple people over the years.
Okay, allow me to ask this. Are you currently utilizing DOT's property to store vehicles?
No, I am not.
Okay, do you know who those vehicles belong to? Do they belong to your, your tenant?
Not my tenants, no. They, the DOT rented for someone.
Okay, all right, thanks. And how many, how many vehicles do you propose to have parked at the subject parcel?
Well, the previous tenant didn't have much from the picture, so this, this person maybe like 60 cars, 60, 70 cars. But the, the previous tenant never reached that, that capacity anyway. They only had like 15 cars parked in there at one time.
Okay, 60 cars, because I thought on the initial application, I saw, I saw 90 or 100 cars? I'm sorry, I didn't highlight it. Give me one moment. Okay, there are 109 parking spaces. Okay, and that would include parking, the required number of parking spaces, John, of 11? Okay, all right. So your tenant proposes 60 cars parked at the location?
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, but I mean, I mean, I can ask him. I mean, I don't know how many cars. I mean, we never, we never put a, a number of cars, just whatever the parking spots are, that's, he cannot go over that, but I don't know how many cars he's planning.
Okay. Okay, let's see. I think that might have been all that I had. Those were all of my questions. Do you all have any questions?
So do you do any painting onsite of the subject parcel that is?
This, this tenant will not do any junk cars, will not do any salvage. That's one of the reasons why. He moved that fence, and I have a current picture. He's not gonna have anything. He's not gonna do any repairs outside, none of that stuff. So no, we're not gonna do none of that stuff.
So do you know if any of the parcels that are adjacent to you do painting?
Yes, I mean, a lot of, I mean, the ones in the back, the ones on the side, I mean, a lot of them, they do the same thing. The one across the street, yes, they do that.
So just for clarification, you do not do any painting onsite?
No, for, no, for this property, nothing.
I'm sorry, I do have a follow-up.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you aware of the code enforcement report or case synopsis that was opened on April 21, 2020?
2020, I, there was some kind of like violation, I guess, or something that came up, but we addressed the issue, and they haven't got anything since that time. So it's been like three years, and they've been in compliance. But that was the only thing I was aware of, but they, they all, they all got back in compliance, and that's why we haven't had any issues since, since 2020.
Okay, do you recall what those violations were?
I think they wanted to put a fence in around, like, like cover, like, lock the view of the cars that being repaired on. I think that was one of them. And that's why they put a green, green fence, but I think, I think that was it. I'm not sure. It's been, it's been a while.
Okay, do you recall a code violation of there being painting and repairing of vehicles on your property?
I think that was one of them, that were coming outside, but I think once they installed the fence, I think that the code enforcement never went back in there. But, but this new tenant I signed on the lease, that basically prohibits all these things from happening. So I already, I already spoken to them. We already have it on the lease that none of that stuff will take place. And that's one of the reasons I made them move the fence out, because, you know, so they are aware that we're not gonna do any outside repairs, none of that stuff.
Okay, and are you also, do you recall from the code enforcement report of there being totaled vehicles on the property?
Yes, I did, yes.
Okay, so you were aware of the painting?
Yes, and.
You were also aware of the wrecker vehicles, demolished vehicles on the property?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was more like somebody, you know, some of the cars was disabled, yes. Some of the cars, like, people came and they stole the wheels, and it just sat, you know, on, on the ground. But, but, you know, we took care of it. We ended up basically hauling all these cars to the junkyard, getting rid of them, yeah.
But, but just so that I'm clear, because the description on the code enforcement synopsis indicates that this is a car dealership. So I'm having a difficult time reconciling how it's a car dealership, but it's also used as a wrecker shop, paint shop, and repair shop?
Well, they, they used to do like. Well, they, they used to do like repairs, uh, but, but again, like, that new tenant, like, that was the old tenant and that's the reason-
I see.
Yeah, that's the guy that already, you know, moved out with the fence. And that's one of the reason why now, only now, we're only applying for a car lot with no repairs, done, no salvage, no, nothing. You know, some of these cars, basically, sometimes they, they, the car get towed, like, they, you know, they, they seal it and the customer get an accident, so they gotta bring the car back to the shop. Uh, that's, some of these cars are, are same, you know?
Sure, but, right, and, and I, I can appreciate that in your lease, you stipulate-
Yeah.
-that these, these things will not occur on the property. But where I'm not feeling as confident is that this property was originally, um, the use is originally for a car dealership, but yet we continue, well, you have these uses at this property. So, you know, although you may have that in writing, I'm not completely confident that the new owner, or I'm sorry, the new tenant will not continue to utilize the property other than what's, what it's intended for.
Yeah, well, well now, but now, like, you know, now, because before I wasn't really, like, I didn't get this in like a quest from the city or the county for prohibited businesses. So again, that's one of the reason why they, they got in, they got in trouble, the previous tenant got in trouble, and that's one, they got those, uh, violation, but then they gotta correct it. And then that's, that's why- You know, they were there for three years, I mean, you know, until recently, and they haven't, they haven't been in violation. So they basically followed everything. So now I'm gonna make sure that the new tenant is basically, are aware of the prohibited things and I will, you know, so, so we don't have to be going through this again, you know, with any violation with the county.
Right, but, and, and this is the final thing I'll say, but the burden is not on the tenant, unfortunately. The burden is on the owner to ensure-
Yeah, I take responsibility, yes. Yeah, I take, I take, I take full responsibility, yes.
All right, thanks. That's, that's all I have to say.
I do have a question, and there's two others that have questions, so. I'm gonna go to Richardson, Burl, I'll go back to you, Garmble, and then I'll have my question. Go ahead.
I'm just indicating that she had, she had a follow-up.
Okay, then I'll go to Burl and then we'll come back.
Okay. So are you asking for used car sales only?
Only.
No other repair work?
No other repairs, no.
No oil change, no changing tires?
No.
No work, no body shock, nothing? And, um, that can be stipulated for that only? But also the number of cars, 'cause you don't have the, um, required amount for paving, for parking?
Well, I mean, it's always gonna be less than what's the, you know, the, the parking spots. I mean, you know, I don't think these guys gonna have all these cars in there, you know? I mean, it's, it's, it requires a lot of, you know, a lot of work to fill up a lot like this, you know? So I'm sure they're gonna have around that, that car amount. And I, I mean, I mean, I mean, listen, I'm, I'm not, I'm not gonna be the, you know, a tenant, so I mean, I cannot tell you they're gonna have 60 cars, 55 cars, 65 cars, you know what I'm saying? Like, but they're not gonna, you know, I can, you know, this is very hard and, you know, to tell you, but they're not gonna overflow their, their lot, basically. They're not, they're, they're, that's not what they're, you know? And these guys already have two other dealerships, uh, so they're already, they're, they're successful business guys. You know, they've been operating for a long time, so they, they know the, they know the rules.
Well, and I also have a concern with the safety issue of the, um, trailers unloading in the middle lane.
I mean, I-
'Cause I have that same thing in Canton Road.
So, so I, I mean, listen, I, I, I've been, you know, I've been in the car business my, you know, since I was 18 years old, so I know exactly, yes, that's, that's the case with all car dealership. They don't have the enough space or turn to have the, the big hauler turn it in their lot. So what I recommend is, uh, you know, we can, we can park on the side street, not on the main street. So that's less traffic, you know? So I can ask him to, for the hauler to unload, um, across the street or behind. There's not, there's really not, not much traffic over there, just to be on the safe side.
Okay, that's all I had.
Okay. Commissioner Garmble?
Okay, I'm gonna ask you a question, but I'm gonna ask a question of staff first. John, do we know how much of this property was taken when, when Veterans Memorial was widened?
Uh, that's an answer I do not know.
Okay.
Well, that's a question, I don't know the answer to, Commissioner Garmble, so I don't know how much was taken when they widened VMH.
Okay, thank you. Do we know when VMH was widened, roughly?
It must've been 30 or 40 years ago. It was a long time ago.
Okay. So I have a question for you. And Cornelius, if you can help me, if you can put your hand right on that first building, you're right above it right now? Yep, that one. Sir, who, who, who does business out of this building?
This is the property, yeah. This is-
Correct, but, but my question is, is who operates the business out of that building right there? Because there's multiple buildings on here?
This is just one basi, one building.
Okay, but what, what, Commissioner Sheffield, with your questions, if you look at the fence-
Yes.
-that is constructed-
Yes.
CP, if you can put, yep, you got it.
Yes.
Okay, that fence does not have an opening here, but there's an opening just outside of the yellow, um, line that is on our, our view that we're looking at.
So that fence is no longer there, ma'am. That was, that was, they had a double gate in the middle right there where that mouse, that mouse is a little bit up. They had the double gate, but you have access to the outside and you have access to inside. So that, that's, that fence is no longer, is, is gone. That whole fence area is gone now. And I have a picture, can I picture if you wanna look at it too? But this is only one building. This is only, the whole thing is just a one building.
Right, and, but where I'm getting confused is while it is one building, you're saying you have two separate businesses.
No, it's just one. This is just for one. This is 621. This is, this is only one building. This, this is, uh, one building.
But, but I thought in your testimony, sir, you said that you had a tenant that operated-
No, it's on the other property. There's another property on the other side of the, on the other corner.
Right, CP, if you can go to the, take your hand to the, the right of the yellow. Right in here.
Where?
That is the second business he was stating, correct?
No, I'm saying, if you go, the building, the other building for that property is on the corner. Oh, I thought it was you, oh.
There you go. Okay, okay.
So, yeah, this, um, so, yes, that one is, that's, that, that's, that property. Yeah, this one is a building, separate building. This is a separate property. This is the building for this property.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, this is only, this is only one property. There's no other tenants in here.
Sir, I have a question for you for clarification. Did you provide that taxes were paid that were owed on the property? This is for the prior tenant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And he did not have a business license? So, go ahead, sir, you're gonna add something?
Go ahead.
Did he pay the back taxes while he was getting a current and active business license?
He was just, he was just left like a week before that. So as soon as he, as soon as I called him, I mean, he didn't, I mean, the guy, they were like ni, nice people. They didn't, they didn't wanna get me, like, 'cause I called him and I said, this is the issue.
Okay.
You know, I tried to help you, you know, guys, we broke the contract, the new contract. I didn't even charge him anything. So they tried to basically do the right thing for me, you know, by me. I mean, they didn't have to. I mean, if somebody else, to be honest with you, I was surprised that they went back and they paid all that money. 'Cause I was like, somebody else would not be like, you know what? We don't have nothing to do with it, like, you can, you know? But they went and paid three years back taxes. And you understand, this guy had stage four cancer, so he didn't really, like, care, but because they were like such a nice people, they went and they felt like they were obligated to help me-
Okay.
-to basically, and they paid the taxes.
Okay, thank you. I have an administrative question for our staff, just to understand process. Jessica, or I'll ask you, I don't know if John may be able to assist. Okay. The matter before us today-
Hi, Jessica.
Hey.
The matter before us today is a special land use permit with a GC zoning. So what I perceive is that the owner has not lost the grandfather status of the GC zoning.
I'll let John to speak to that.
Okay.
Uh, and you are exactly correct, Madam Chair. The property is a general commercial in a community activity center, and there are no zoning conditions on this property. So this is good usable GC property that's not grand, not, not grandfathered.
Okay, so he wasn't impugned then by the prior tenant not paying the business license fees? 'Cause sometimes when there's an active business on a property for, I believe it's a couple of months, 60 days, then they can be subject to losing that grandfather status. So that's not what's prompting today. And if that's not, if that is not what is prompting today's hearing, help me understand what is.
Well, and, and, you know, the fact that there was no business license for over a year lost the grandfather status. You know, what the applicant said regarding our business license division, you know, Alicia Webb is really great at collecting, uh, tax money that the county's owed.
Okay.
So they're two separate things. You know, the county got its tax money for all the prior years, and that takes care of business license.
Okay.
The zoning part is still gonna be a problem, 'cause they did not have a business license for over 12 months. And the zoning code states that the business license is the number one evidence we use when we determine grandfathering or non-grandfathering. And they have not had it for years.
But they have the appropriate zoning for the use, so they don't-
Correct.
-need to come back. They just need the SLUP in order to operate.
Correct.
'Cause it's in a CAC, okay? And then, um, the SLUP, the SLUP is because they have a used car sales business, but they said that they've been operating a used car sale business. So why are we coming back for a SLUP now?
Be, because the one thing that we're required to use by code to determine if they're grandfather or not is the business license. By virtue, they have had one for years, makes them lose their grandfather status, even though it had been used for used car lots since the early 1970s. You know, that, that lapse in time is what kicks them into our process today.
So the lapse doesn't just impact the underlying zoning, but it also impacts a special land use permit?
It only impacts a special land use permit, because used car lots are required to have a special land use permit.
Okay.
But the underlying zoning is good.
Okay.
So, John, to clarify then, when the used car lot use on the property was initially started, at that time, it was been allowable use. But since that time, I'm understanding that with the lapse now, then the special land use permit's required.
I can understand that, if he's had this property for as long as he had, prior to zoning being in place and us having, um, the special land use permit in place, I'm presuming there was no SLUP on the property prior? Or are you telling me there was a prior SLUP?
There, there was no prior SLUP. You know, just a fact about special land use permits and used car lots, the board started requiring those in 1997.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I have some other comments that I may, um, share after a motion, but I just wanted to get some clarification administratively to what's prompting today's hearing. Does anyone else have any questions? For the applicant or anyone else? Let me just throw the strike, excuse me. I wanna note that although there were just two people in the audience today in opposition, there were several residents that, um, sent emails in opposition to this application, at least a dozen or a dozen and a half that opposed, um, this application. However, I thank you for participating in the process and today's zoning hearing. But the subject parcel has been used as a car lot, which was, um, the testimony of the applicant today, dating back over five decades. The current owner, though, has owned the property for just 11 years. But in that 11 years, I have not observed any investment made to the property to enhance the community in which it serves. Instead, it seemed to have gone in the opposite direction, based on some of the testimony that the applicant shared today and some of the photographs that were shared by, uh, the Mableton Improvement Coalition. It also has a history of code enforcement violations, which dates back three years, which we discussed earlier, including storage of wrecked vehicles, storage of tires, storage of tools, auto parts, parking on the grass, parking, uh, storing tires on the grass. The description of the business on the code enforcement case synopsis is identified as a car dealership. But the code enforcement inspector observed several uses, including vehicle paintings and repairs in the parking lot and a building that was installed that housed heavy equipment for car repairs. With the final observation of, and I quote, "It looks really bad from the street, and I think they may be an EPA violation as well," end quote. There are 14 items for the board's consideration to determine whether a grant, whether to grant a special land use permit. There were several of those 14 items that captured my attention, but the one that resonated the most with me is section 134 dash 37E3, which states whether or not the proposed use will result in a nuisance as defined under state law. Nuisance as defined by Georgia law is anything that causes hurt, inconvenience, or damage to another. And some of the common nuisances include junk accumulation, noise, and encroachments on the public right of way that interfere with the pedestrian passage. Considering a reduction in lot, in lot size by over 2,000 square feet, which is the variance that we are being asked to consider, does not allow for suitable maneuvering to unload vehicles on the site, which would likely be unloaded in the right of way, which both we heard from the applicant today and also a photograph provided by the Mableton Improvement Coalition. Interfering with the public's right of way to unload vehicles would likely be the case if this variance is granted, and obstructing pedestrian passage are safety concerns for me to consider, or for the board to consider. Although the code violations were addressed and corrected, I am troubled by the violations in the report. The description of the violation seemed to be more in line with a wrecker, car repair, or tire shop business and not a car dealership. And I appreciate, um, your testimony today to the applicant and sharing that that was the, um, the business model, the behavior of the former tenant, but ultimately, as the owner, you are responsible for what happens on your property. This flagrancy of the property leads me to believe that perhaps there is a perception from the owner and his tenants that the community does not care or have an interest in the way the communities look, but we do, we do. Based on my observation of the appearance of this property and the code enforcement violations, I believe that this business can be, or has been, a detriment to the economic development and viability of the area, which is also another item of consideration for a SLUP application. I am not confident that granting this variance would bring about anything different other than what we have experienced over the last 11 years, despite there was a different tenant for the past 11 years that the applicant has owned the property. And with that, Madam Chair, I am prepared to make a motion. I make a motion to, I make a motion to deny SLUP 3, 2023.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? And call the question? Motion passes, five, zero. Need to take a quick minute recess.
Thank you, and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll go ahead and get started with our next case.
Okay, the next case we're going to hear is other business item number nineteen of two thousand and twenty-three, which is considered a stipulation amendment for Twiliger Pappas Multifamily Partners LLC regarding rezoning applications, Z twenty-six of two thousand and seven, for property located at the southeast corner of Big Shanty Road and Hidden Forest Court in Landlords five oh one and five oh two of the sixteenth district. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number nineteen? Let the record show there's no one opposed. We'll start there.
All right. Kevin, feel free to get started whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore. I'm here and pleased to represent Twiliger Pappas in this other business application for their proposed project at the Town Village Development and Community that is sits on just on the north side of Town Center Mall. Before you now, just to reorient you to where you are with this property, what's been highlighted is the Town Village Development that was rezoned originally in two thousand and seven, began development in two thousand and eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and has developed ever since then. This three-point-seven acre parcel, which is at the corner of Big Shanty, which is the street or road that you see at the top, and Hidden Forest Court, which runs through the middle of this very large redevelopment area, is the last remaining parcel for the development of Town Village. Last October, you approved an other business application for a site plan approval for this last parcel for a proposed multifamily market rate community to be built and constructed by Twiliger Pappas for that final piece to close this out after a very long time and close out Town Village as far as its development. We're here today on a request to modify. We're going to turn to the site plan itself, and I'm going to go over here and show you and kind of walk you through. I've given you paper copies of what I'm going to walk you through, so it should help with understanding what is, what we're really requesting here. This was the site plan that you approved as a board back in October of two thousand and twenty-two for the proposed market rate multifamily building. If you recall, Town Village is comprised of both market rate and student housing communities as part of Town Village because of its close proximity to Kennesaw State University. At the time, the other business item for site plan approval was approved in October. The board also approved and added on a condition, zoning condition, for approval at that time that would, that limited the height of the building to fifty-five feet, presumably, based on the discussion. That zoning condition was placed by the board and borrowed from the Student Housing Ordinance, which has a fifty-five-foot height maximum. Now, this particular property is zone PVC. None of the other parcels have a height maximum. The height maximum under PVC is seventy-five feet. And in fact, because this property is located within a regional activity center, height is determined by the board. So what we're coming back here to do today is to ask you for an accommodation and request to approve a very limited modification to that height limitation that was placed by the board, covering this area on top of the parking deck to allow for an amenity and pool deck to be placed on the top of this community that would take it up to that seventy-four, just under seventy-five feet. So still within the code allowed seventy-five-foot height for PVC, where when we turned to show you exactly what we're going to be looking at, which is the second page, we go to the top of this parking deck to show you how limited this request is. Here is the building itself and its footprint. Here's the footprint that we're speaking of, the green and the blue that you see here. It's a club, a club room and amenity area here, as well as the pool deck here that goes up to that seventy-four, just under seventy-five feet. That comprises only fourteen percent of the entire building footprint. Stated another way, eighty-six percent of this project will be under fifty-five feet. Only this portion for this high-level amenity is, will extend up to seventy-five feet. And part of this, too, is important because this is not student housing. And I want to be very clear about that. This property, this particular parcel is encumbered by a restrictive covenant. If you recall, that prohibits it from being utilized as student housing. Twiliger Pappas takes that very seriously, and so do its equity partners and lenders. So there have been many measures put in place for them. This is going to be a high-end, first-class, market-rate, multifamily community that will operate as such. It's not programmed for students. It's programmed for those residents who want to live here and lease here. It's programmed as such that it limits actually the number of multi-bedroom units. Ninety, ninety-plus percent of these units will be studio one and two bedrooms, as opposed to three bedrooms. Student housing is all four, five, and six-bedroom units. More importantly here, each resident will have to qualify for its lease and cannot have a guarantor. That's also very prevalent in student housing. So it's really going to limit, and it's not going to be student housing. And so part of our position for you to consider is the fifty-five-foot height limit was put in place because it related to the Student Housing Ordinance. That's where it was put in place from. It doesn't otherwise exist on this property. We're not asking for a variance from the code. We're asking for a slight modification to that condition because we believe the condition was placed on there thinking this would largely be student housing, when in fact, it is not going to be whatsoever. Turning next to the other aspect, and that is making sure that it's consistent with or compatible to the surrounding Town Village development. So we had our designers produce this. This is a rendering from the corner of Big Shanty and Hidden Forest. This is an existing, this was the first building built in Town Village. This is our proposed building here. And as you can see, the height matches and is very consistent, because it is consistent. Again, eighty-six percent of this building is fifty-five feet or less in height. We're only talking about an amenity rooftop feature so that this property can really distinguish itself as a first-in-class. Keep, if we could keep going, just want to try to reiterate again the compatibility and the height. This is looking from Hidden Forest Court into our project. And again, you can see the height, that's fifty-five feet of height or less. The only portion that is even above that is this small, just over four thousand square foot amenity, which is just a club room for these, these future residents that's located here. So it will not be visible to the passing public. It will not have visibility that would be extreme or show extreme height. It's just the opposite as it relates to this. Going to the amenity itself, just so you can further see and understand what is being proposed. This is the visual rendering of the type of, of the proposed amenity by Twiliger Pappas. Here you can see the pool, the pool and pool deck and the club room here and different versions of that. So you can see not only the first-in-class style of what's being proposed here, but really the limitation on how this affects that height limitation that the board placed on this property. And again, here are other visual representations of exactly what they build and what they are known for in terms of their product. Now, turning, let me turn these around, to, this is a letter that is from the Town Village Owners Association, who really is the one to determine what is consistent with the Town Village development itself. The Town Village Owners Association is the owners association for all of the projects within Town Village. This is from the president, Mr. Jeffrey Muter, expressing his support for this project, the support for the quality of what Twiliger Pappas brings to Town Village and support for the design of the project as being compatible and consistent with the quality of Town Village overall. We think it's extremely important that the one that is involved with the day-to-day operations, activities of the Owners Association there at Town Village has expressed that support, and we have submitted that to the county clerk for the record. Also, last letter. I did want to, for the record, submit a letter that had been written by Mayor Sam Couvion from the city of Gainesville. And this is more to just point to the quality of the corporate citizen with Twiliger Pappas that is building this project here. Mayor Couvion, an elected official in the city of Gainesville, Georgia, has worked extensively, him and his city council and his city have worked extensively with Twiliger Pappas in their city, partnered with them to have an outstanding project built in downtown Gainesville that has become a star of their city as well. And this simply speaks to the type of development that's being placed here, the quality, the first-in-class, and the cooperation that Twiliger Pappas brings to any project and brings to any jurisdiction. And also thought it was rather, I haven't seen an elected official write a letter like this so supportive of a developer in this, in this instance. And I thought it was worthy of sharing with you, if for nothing else, for noting who it is that would be building this project in Cobb County and building at this location for what they can do. But more importantly, again, all that's being requested here is a modification of the fifty-five-foot height limit to apply only to the amenity feature, which comprises fourteen percent of the footprint that's located on top of the parking deck to go up to seventy-five feet, which is what code allows under PVC. And to allow that one feature to go to that height, the rest and remaining of the building will still be under the fifty-foot, fifty-five-foot height. We believe this is an excellent project and urge your consideration and approval. We're here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, is there anyone else here to speak towards this application in support or opposition? All right, seeing that, I'll turn things over to Commissioner Burrell.
Do you want to ask for staff's recommendation first?
Sure, why don't we do that?
Or after?
I think it's probably better to get it first.
Okay.
John, what is staff's recommendation?
Madam Chair and Board, the staff recommend the board approve the request subject to a maximum height of seventy-five feet for the amenity area only, subject to the fire department comments contained in the other business packet, subject to the Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. And lastly, all previous zoning conditions not in conflict remain in effect.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell.
Thank you. When this was, when this came in for other business last year in October and was approved, we added certain stipulations that relate to student housing because it is surrounded by student housing and across the street on Big Shanty from KSU Stadium. The applicant agreed to the security plan that is required with, to work with police, the cameras, the lighting, and the fifty-five feet in height. Then, because there's a deed restriction on this last parcel of Hidden Village, I mean, Town Village, Hidden Forest Court, thank goodness, there's a deed restriction that it cannot be student housing. So it came in for market rate apartments. So when the, this other business application came in for, originally eighty feet, it was going to be twenty-five feet higher for the, the amenity area, which we did get one letter in opposition from Bells Ferry Civic dated April twelfth, when it was eighty feet. So I met with the applicant and their attorney and asked them to show us the amenity area and what they're asking for. They did reduce it to the seventy-five feet, which is allowed in PVC maximum. But the remainder of the building will be, still be the fifty-five feet. So I'm, haven't heard anymore, any opposition. And they are within the PVC requirements for the seventy-five feet max for the amenity area only. And all the other stipulations, including the traffic signal,
Correct.
which they are contributing to, will, will also remain in effect. And all the other steps not in conflict. But this is just for the height, approval for the seventy, maximum seventy-five feet height of the amenity area, which I believe you said is fourteen percent of the entire?
It's just over fourteen percent, that's right.
Okay.
It's, it's on that one.
And also, if you could go back to the picture of the building, the U Point building beside, and when, you can't see this at all from Big Shanty, which is the main road. But when you turn down Hidden Forest Court, it's tucked back away, and you really can't notice that it's going to be higher. So with staff's recommendation, recommendation of approval and that they meet the requirements for PVC, I'll make a motion to approve, OB nineteen.
Second, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Burrell?
Just some comments, and I know it's a little, we, we can't change the site plan because that's not what they're in here for. But it's just interesting because if you look, going back to the case we just heard with having to offload on Veterans Memorial Highway and stuff, there really isn't any room in here for moving trucks to come in and out to get people moved into this facility. And if you look at the PVC that's next to it, there's adequate room for vehicles to come in, load, unload, et cetera. So that's just one thing bleeding over from the last one. I cannot support this because in the DOT comments, number one, the DOT airport manager should provide an updated total height because this building is over forty feet. Yes, we know we have some buildings in the area that are fifty-five feet, which we're assuming that the airport had approved, but now going to seventy-five feet, how will that impact the airport and the changes that we know are coming to McCollum? Therefore, I can't support this.
Is this in the, have we gotten any comments from the airport, John?
It's in the DOT comments.
LaGia, can you come up?
Good morning, LaGia Florin.
Good morning. Can, can you address the DOT comments and any, any reference to the airport?
Sure, so every time that something is proposed above forty feet, they have to coordinate with our airport manager. And they are, I believe that the applicant is doing that as they go through the landstorm experiment and the plan review. So there's a concurrent plan review happening with this site. So there's a concurrent plan review happening with this site. And based on that, they should be, they will not get the final permit until they have that approval from the airport manager.
Okay. So, but wouldn't that have, wouldn't that have to have been done when the apartments were approved in October of last year?
They sure have. Yes, ma'am, but I, I do not have that information. And I don't know if the applicant has the proof of approval from the airport manager.
So have they been through plan review?
Yes, there's a concurrent plan review process going on.
Okay. So I need to add that to, I guess, my stipulations if that's, will be, they won't get a land disturbance permit until that is met, that requirement is met with the airport.
Correct.
Commissioner, that's addressed in DOT recommendations here?
Yes.
I don't perceive that we need to augment what DOT provided. And Laheya just provided clarification on what that concurrent process is. I would feel cautious about us inserting language about actions that staff needs to take when we are not fully familiar with what steps they need to take.
Right. Our recommendation, number two, refers to that, that review permit and that they have to comply to all of those.
All staff comments and not otherwise in conflict, what John said. So can I revise my motion to add staff comments not otherwise in conflict?
Certainly, again.
Commissioner Richardson?
Two points of clarification, but for the applicant, so, thank you. It says this requirement is triggered at building height above 40 feet. The whole, all the other buildings, everything is 55 feet currently, right? So this is already incorporated as a part of the planning process. It wouldn't be something new as a result of the 75. And then clarification on 475 feet, is that? I'm just trying to make sure that it's written in a way that it is specifically tied to that amenity area and that it's not something that could be used for the other parcels? And just make sure that that's clear and how it's?
Yes, and when, when I was asked to read my recommendation, my first item was maximum height, 75 feet for the amenity area only.
Okay, just want to make sure that's sufficient with, okay. And then last piece is for move-in. I'm assuming the parking area would be used for those that are trying to move into the housing area.
Parking deck with the building wrapped around it, like we see other types of developments. And so they've, it's been designed specifically to accommodate multiple drop-off points within the interior once you turn in. So yes, it's been accommodated. And as to your first question, yes, those other buildings in the area, both at Town Village and next to the stadium and other buildings, they're anywhere from 55 to 70 feet tall as well, have all gone through. It's a technical process you go through, not unlike the, you know, the TKE building next to the Braves Stadium that had to go through from a height standpoint. So this, it's just a technical requirement with the airport manager.
Thank you. Those are all of my questions.
Thank you. Are there any?
Yeah, Kevin, do you want to address Commissioner Gamble's comment about moving trucks, loading and unloading?
The, the design accommodates that. I mean, this is, they do this for, they do this for a living. And so their design, I can turn to the site plan and it's, and show you how that's accommodated, which I'm happy to do.
Just state your name for the record.
Yeah, it's Derek Hutchison.
Does he need to be sworn in?
Thank you. We trust what you're saying now.
Sorry, say it again.
I said, we trust what you're saying.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we're clear. So really loading and loading will be done in two different areas. First will be done off big, off the entrance of a big shanty. So you can see there, there's actually accommodations for a fire truck turnaround. And so ultimately, there's a loading elevator inside the garage. So parking, a moving truck can park there, unload it into the, the freight elevator, which is in the deck, and go up to the units. Additionally, there, it is a little bit tight in the, the center circle, but for smaller moving trucks and moving vans, we anticipate some people being able to pull off into that traffic circle and utilize that for, for unloading of, of smaller items.
And to add one more thing, unlike student housing, where everybody moves in in July and moves out in the following July, you know, student housing's done on a set leasing for all the students because they come in at the same time and leave at the same time. This is multifamily market rate, so they're leasing continuously. So you don't have the entire building moving in on, within a three-day stretch and moving out. So that also would help add to that explanation.
And will this be developed in phases or all at once?
Just at once.
It'll be, it'll be developed all at once, but it'll be turned over in phases. So there'll be two different turnover phases where we'll seek a cert, a temporary certificate of occupancy to move in to the leasing office and to some of the units. And then there'll be, there'll be firewalls that will separate the remainder, the, the kind of completion that's happening. And then the final turn will be approximately three to four months later. But it'll all be, all be one continuous process.
Okay, thank you. I, I'd like to amend my motion. I make a motion to approve other business item number 19 to allow a maximum of 75 feet in height for the amenity area only. The remainder of the building will be a maximum of 55 feet in height. And all other staff comments and recommendations remain in effect.
Okay, same second?
Second.
All right, any additional comments or questions? Call the question. The motion carries for one with Commissioner Gamble in opposition.
Right, sure. Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is other business item number 22 of 2023, which is to consider a reduction of minimum public road frontage from 75 feet to 25 feet and allow a second electrical meter for Bertine Latour. The property is located at the east end terminus of Flint Lockway in Land Lot 277 in the 20th District. Is the applicant present? The director shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 22? Let the director show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Hello.
Good morning.
My name is Bertine Latour. My family and I, we purchased that home in 2018. Ever since we purchased it, we making a better home in the community because we didn't have no roof. Basically, everything was falling apart. We making a better home. Now, the only thing that left to do is to do a car garage with an office on top of it. However, that upon hiring, like we did the slab framing, and that's when we came in contact with the electricians. Multiple people had told us that we don't have any, enough electricity to power the new addition because we are in 150 amp. And they said that we already pulling like 148, so we don't have enough. And we did have explored the option to upgrade to a larger meter. That's when we came to find out that, oh, like it's on the other side of the house, like the current meter and as well as the panel is in the basement on the other side. There is no other way, even if I were to upgrade to a higher meter, that we can transport that electricity to the new building. Because we'll have to even, like, also go underground to change everything that's underneath, like do the whole, basically do the house that we currently live in in the new. So the only thing that was left to do, because like I'm having quote like $25,000 to $30,000 to do that, the cheapest way is to come to you guys and ask for us to get a new, a different meter just for that.
Okay. Thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
I don't perceive there was anyone else here in support or in opposition of this applicant or application? Seeing none, John, I will ask for your recommendation prior to turning it over to the commissioner.
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board approve the request, subject to the road frontage to be 25 feet. Number two, stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet. And number three, property to be used for single-family use only.
Okay, and Commissioner Gamble?
If I can have the applicant come back, please? So I was a little confused because the site plan that was contained that you submitted and what we're seeing here do not meet. Do you have a driveway going to the proposed garage that you're asking to be built?
Yes.
So there is a driveway?
Yes.
Okay. John, can, can you help? Because what I have doesn't show that.
Because it's like a circle, because if you look at it on the thing, where you see the green, basically it's a circle, like you can come from here and the building is right here, or you can go and I can make the circle.
Right, but where I'm confused is what I had to look at to consider your application does not show a driveway going to the garage structure. But what I'm seeing here, there is. So that's where I have some confusion.
Yeah, the survey is dated April 5th, 2023, so it, it should be pretty current. How long has that gravel circular part been?
Oh, it's been there since 2018, since we moved, yeah. That was just, yeah, it's always been there. I don't know why they did not include it.
Because that was one of my concerns is while I understand you've gone through the permitting process for a garage, I thought it was very strange that the garage did not have a driveway to it.
It does have one. I don't know why they did not show it on the survey, but it's always been there.
Okay, okay. So the, do we know what the date of this GIS is by chance? Okay, thank you. Okay. So will you be finishing the upstairs portion of the garage to make it into any type of living bedroom?
No, it's just gonna be offices. It's gonna be like an office for myself and one for my husband.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't an extra bedroom.
I'm sorry?
I said, I don't need an extra bedroom to clean.
Okay. Well, the reason why I'm asking, and again, I, I have, I have talked to staff because one of the comments on here led me to believe that you might be adding this on as a, a separate living quarter. So that's why I'm just verifying for the record. Okay, okay, thank you. Also, on your site plan, you showed that you have a chicken coop?
That's what it's supposed to be.
So do you have any chickens on site?
I used to have. I don't have anymore.
Okay, because if you did, you would need to get a permit to have chickens, just so you know that.
I was not aware of that, but I used to have. I'm not gonna lie.
Yes. So you could have up to eight hens, eight hens only, no roosters. But please go through community development to obtain that license before you bring chickens onboard.
Okay.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
Just one acre.
Her application isn't for chickens, but in reviewing the site plan, that was one of the things that I asked staff was, did she have a current permit for the chickens? And the answer was no, so that's why we wanted to verify because that way we could take care of it while we were here.
Yeah, but I do plan, so I'm glad that you said that, so I'll go and get the proper permit.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the reduction of minimum public road frontage from 75 feet to 25 feet. The meter not to serve any detached, detached accessory structures. This is for the primary structure only. The garage addition with living quarters, if they go there, must be attached per code with a fully enclosed conditioned breezeway. And that is all.
Second? Okay, other staff comments or recommendations?
I'm sorry. Are there? Well, and, and that's where it's difficult, John, because I know the water and sewer comments that are on here are not applicable to this. So DOT didn't have any comments.
It was only stormwater management that had comments.
So I guess I will add stormwater management comments and recommendation, and then any comments and recommendations as found as it proceeds through site plan review. Does that cover it? Okay, so that would be my amended motion.
Okay, and continuing, second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0.
Okay, last item on the agenda is other business item number 24 of 2023, which is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Robert Michael Shepherd regarding rezoning application Z145 of 1993. The property is located on the north side of Branford Way, west of Bell's Ferry Road in Land Lot 213 of the 16th District. Is the applicant present? The director shows the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 24? Please stand up, raise your hands. Seven, okay, let the director show there's seven people here opposed to this application. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Good, thank you. Get my slides up here. I can see it. Hi, everybody. My name is Michael Shepherd. I live at 328 Branford Way, and I'm here representing my neighbors at the, at the locations for the other business application. Okay, so for the meeting objectives today, we're going to go through the purpose of the application, some of the background on the buffer zone that we're trying to remove for the application, take a look at some of the current site conditions, look at the impacts of the buffer zone on the properties, go through some conclusions, and then just get any questions and feedback. Okay, so the purpose of this is to remove a buffer zone for some select properties on the northwest corner of Land Lot 213 at the park at Bell's Ferry neighborhood. The buffer zone exists on the properties that are applying to remove the zone. So these are actually owned by the property owners. And I included a snip of the plat for the neighborhood. So properties affected are 324 through 334, and then property 340 on the left. And what you can see there is the property extends to that back line there, and then there's a 20-foot undisturbed buffer. And the purpose of this is to remove that undisturbed buffer on the drawing. Okay, so for the background on why the buffer is there, so the undisturbed buffer was originally defined in a zoning application. It was Z145 in 1993, so it's about 30 years ago. The buffer zone is defined as the developer agrees to landscape between the properties in Arden Trace, which is the neighborhood that borders on the northwest side. in Arden Trace, which is the neighborhood that borders on the northwest side with Virginia pines or comparable evergreen plantings along the northwesterly property lines. The trees are planted at a maximum of 10 feet on center, minimum of 5 feet in height upon installation, and with it being a 20-foot buffer, there's two rows of trees in this backyard, so that would be 10 feet and then two rows. And this was created during the construction of the neighborhood for the park at Bell's Ferry, just from the research that I was doing, it was a, it looks like there were some concerns by the HOA over privacy between the neighborhoods, so they elected to put a buffer on the properties for Bell's Ferry. Okay, so for the current site conditions, the buffer at the properties discussed has mostly not been in place for several years, 10 to 20-plus in some instances, and this is just along Branford Way. Several of these pine trees have fallen naturally due to storms or have been removed due to disease that are property damaged. Pine trees don't typically last particularly long, so approving OB24 would result in no actual physical changes to the current properties, so we don't want to make any modifications to the properties currently. But what we're pushing for is that denying OB24 resulted in us planting dozens of trees on the rear side of the properties, so that's what we're trying to avoid. And then planting a tree is really not practical at this current moment, 30 years later, and I was gonna show some photos to kind of show the reasons why. So the first photo here, and I don't know if it's too small, hopefully you guys can see that okay, this is the rear yard for 324 Branford Way. The owner moved here 17 years ago, and when she moved in, there was only one tree along this buffer zone, and there's also a lot of trashed briars, vines, and deep woods plant life, and this actually was on her property fenced in, as you can see. She, you know, was beginning to raise a family at this time. It was, you know, dangerous. She was worried about dangerous wildlife, you know, kids getting into things, and so she had the briars and things cleaned, and then she decided to plant another tree to make it look nicer. This is my property at 328, so there's one pine tree in the background that you can see that what I think would have been a part of the original buffer. I've not cut down any trees except for one pine tree that fell during a storm. That fell and kind of laid over my neighbor's fence, and we were worried about it, so we had that removed. But you can actually see in this photo, there's a bird feeder that's about 20 foot off of the fence. That's exactly where the line of the trees would go to, so the buffer zone would take up, conveniently, that's all the green grass there, so it would move up and cover all that grass there with trees and take away the bulk of the usable yard space. This is 330, my neighbor. There are actually no trees from her original buffer zone. The reason why is because her backyard, both of us have a culvert, a drainage culvert between our properties. It also provides drainage for Arden Trace as well, and so all of the floodwater drains into our yards, and her, our backyard's flooded, hers flooded significantly. She had trees, and about 15 years ago, she had to cut them down because they became diseased and started to fall, and she was worried about damage to the neighboring properties. So the only way that you really could physically plant trees in this yard would be, it would require significant site and grading work that really wouldn't be feasible. This is 332, the next door neighbor here. I just showed this one because there were no trees when he moved in a few years ago that were present, but he has worked on improving his yard. He put a shed installation in that you can see in the back there, and actually denying OB24 would result in him having to remove the shed. It'd be a large financial impact to him as well in that regard. So just to cover some of the impacts here, if upheld, planting trees in the buffer zone would also render about 1,000 square feet of the mostly 6500 square foot properties unusable, so that's about 15% would be covered in trees. It would result in removal of and damage to expensive landscaping that has been done to improve the properties, so sod installations in backyards, sheds, things of that nature. It's also not feasible due to flooding and other things. It would result in a lot of site grading, and the homeowners would also incur a large cost of planting, so it's fairly expensive to plant those trees. They have to be installed at 5 feet. It would take a lot of site work to actually get the trees installed the way that the code requires it. So in conclusion, approving OB24 will keep the affected homes the way they are, and it would put those kinds of landscaping decisions in our hands, and we could continue with our properties the way that they currently are. The failure to approve OB24 would reverse, it sounds a bit dramatic, but really years of hard work and verification on the affected properties. It could also create dangerous conditions to allow unwanted plant and wildlife into the buffer zone, and it would result in a large financial burden for us. And really, I added to, you know, we were all unaware that this actually existed. The only way it's accessible is on the land plat, and it's not immediately clear looking at it, and so really, it was kind of a shock to us when we got the notification that we had to plant trees. And that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. There are three minutes remaining on the clock. If there's anyone else wishing to speak in support of this other business application? All right, seeing none, we'll hear from opposition. Oh, I see one hand up. Is that for support, ma'am?
I'm not sure. I just, I live in the neighborhood of Florida.
Are you, okay, the reason I'm asking is because there's a set amount of time for those in support and a set amount of time for those in opposition. Okay, thank you, so it can be sworn in? Okay, you have about three minutes left on the clock.
I don't even believe I'll need that many.
Okay, state your name for us, if you can state your name, please.
My name is Larissa Ruttler.
Okay.
And I have, I first purchased 4249 Pentworth Lane in February 2010, and so my backyard basically overlooks this entire land strip that is in question, and since 2010, there has never been a buffer along those properties.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in support of this other business application? All right, not seeing any, we'll hear from those in opposition, and just be mindful, I saw a number of hands go up, that you have a limited amount of time, 10 minutes for all of you to speak.
Good morning. My name is Susan Max, and my husband and I have owned a house in Arden Trace since 1993. It's not directly affected by this particular buffer issue. It's four houses up the hill north of this particular lot that we're discussing today, but I think it poses a bigger issue for the neighborhood in that if the buffer zones can be breached and the basic ruling originally by the developers is overturned, it affects the entire neighborhood. Properties are benefiting right now from the aesthetics and the privacy we get from those buffers, as well as the management of the surface water runoff between the neighborhoods. Right now, our buffer has not been disturbed. We have not lost any trees. It's a beautiful area, and I think on both sides, on the other development side as well as ours, we enjoy that ability to look out and see trees and not have that destroyed, and that's why we purchased that property originally.
Good morning, the board. My name is Valeria Washington. I have been living in Arden Trace since 2003, so it's 20 years, and I live in the street that is adjacent to the area that is being discussed. I lived at the top of the area, basically at the beginning of this buffer zone. This buffer zone, both for Arden Trace and for the park, I had the opportunity to see the plaques of both properties in original zoning, and the buffer area was originally approved for both developments. The Arden Trace being the older neighborhood, the park being the newer one, with mostly, I would say, 10 years in between them. I live in a totally undisturbed area where there is a hydric easement between two properties where all the rain drain runs on the side and goes to a creek that is inside this buffer area. The buffer area has birds, original birds, trees. In 20 years there, I never seen a single tree falling, be by lightning bolt or disease or anything. There was never a falling tree on that buffer area. It's pretty healthy, and for this reason, it should be maintained. It pays a big service in absorbing the rain area that runs in the back, and in no ways in nuisance, and I oppose this petition. Have a good morning.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Melody Chapman. I am a homeowner in Bell's Ferry. I live within 1,000 feet of this buffer. One of my big concerns, and I'd like to use this here. You all can see that, okay, and can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay, oh, thank you. So as you can see, these are the properties highlighted here that this buffer area would be removed here. This is the only entrance and egress from the neighborhood for the entire neighborhood, so if this area should flood for any reason, that is gonna make it very difficult for anyone to get in or get out of this neighborhood, emergency vehicles or just people trying to leave. As you can see here, what I've highlighted, this is listed as a tributary river, and this here is listed as a detention pond, so it's clear that water is supposed to drain and is readily prevalent in this area. My concern is that removing this buffer and removing these trees, you know, trees in a single day can soak up, I believe it's 150 gallons of water a day, or up to 11,000 gallons a season, and we, I noticed in early March that of this year, that several trees were removed from in and around this cul-de-sac. I walk this area typically every night. You could smell and see woodchips all in this area, and so we noticed that several trees had been removed in and around this neighborhood, and they did appear to be healthy, the trees that were removed. They didn't appear to be diseased. So our concern is just for the flooding purposes, how are we gonna get in and out of the neighborhood if the trees aren't there to help with the drainage issue? It also, of course, makes it hotter because we don't have that tree cover, and if there is sitting water, that's also, you know, breeding for mosquitoes, those sorts of things. So that's really my main concern, in addition to the aesthetics of now it is visibly, in my opinion, more noticeable that there are fewer trees, and so it looks much more bare, which I think personally looks not as nice for the property values, but practically, I think that's a big issue for me.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. One last point here. One last point here. For the purpose of why this was enacted, this is in the petition, and you can see it was passed in 1993. You'll note that the reason for the petition, or for the code enforcement, is that to prevent flood damage, required undisturbed buffers to control site stormwater discharges, not to exceed the capacity of downstream storm drainage, you know, storm flood damage prevention ordinance controls stormwater. So clearly, there is a purpose as to why this buffer is there, to control stormwater.
Thank you. There are five minutes remaining of opposition, sir. We won't be taking additional questions.
My name is Christine Seer, and I'm the HOA president for the park at Bell's Ferry. Just to let you know, I am in opposition of this. First of all, the buffer that they proposed, the 25-foot buffer, whether the trees have been eliminated, whether they have fallen on their own, the buffer shouldn't, I don't feel that the buffer should be removed. It's not that there's a buffer of tree, you know, the trees should be removed. It's the undisturbed buffer, so whatever was in that buffer cannot be touched. So whether it falls naturally, then that's fine, but we, the problem with this was the homeowner at the property at 340 Branford, they removed 12 trees. Eight of them were in the undisturbed buffer, and that's what started this entire thing. So they were, they did not get approval, they did not get permits, they did not get anything, and then there was this big hole behind there. Like, you could spit on the house in Arden Trace now. I mean, they took beautiful, beautiful trees. They were not rotted, they were not dying, they were fine, and they wanted to build a fence, they wanted a bigger yard, and so they cut down all these trees without approval. What happened was, then code looked at the street, and they said, oh, well, this house and this house and this house and this house are also in violation. Whether that happened, you know, where that happened, the original problem was with 340, which was the house at 340, and that was the major issue there. Now code found the other ones in violation. But what our concern is, is that you have all, you have the sewage drain in between 340 and 342, you have all of these trees that were taken down. I took pictures of them, and they had I have, well, I have them on my phone. Will they show? There, I mean, they were huge. They were over 100 feet high. They were, there were, and I went back there and I was over another neighbor's fence, and I was counting them, and the lack of care, whether there was a buffer or not, he just said, I didn't, you know, I asked the homeowner, I didn't know. Well, he had just bought his house, and he's just claiming ignorance that he didn't know. Well, that's a lot, I mean, that is a lot, that is a lot of trees to cut down without a permit, without approval, without anything, and you are opening up so, just the space between the two subdivisions, which was there for years. So basically, you're just saying that it didn't matter. I don't, I just feel that there's a lot more to this than just the trees falling, or, I mean, and if there were not that many, if, like he said, if there were not that many trees, it's still an undisturbed buffer. Whether there's one tree, whether there's five trees, it's an undisturbed buffer. So, and if it falls, then that's fine, but you can't disturb an undisturbed buffer. And so just to eliminate that, just this basically saying that, you know, it didn't matter and it didn't exist, and you're gonna, and it's opening up all this land and all this, you know, they could basically see in each other's backyard. I mean, it's, this is, it was, it was a huge, I mean, it was huge difference in the skyline and in the drainage, where they took out all the trees and then they ground them down and they regraded the property. Now everything goes down and there's a manhole.
Thank you, ma'am.
So.
Thank you. Sir, at this time, it's not appropriate to add additional questions. However, if the district commissioner has any additional questions for you, she may call you back up. Sir, it's not, I'm sorry, thank you. John, can you let us know what staff's recommendation is?
Madam Chair, the staff would recommend the board deny the request.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn things over to the commissioner. Thank you.
I guess I can ask this of staff. Are you here for code enforcement, Jessica?
I am.
Yeah, and some of the pictures from the applicant, they all had fences in their backyard, and one had a shed, and all that is in the buffer area now?
That would be my understanding. If citations have been issued, and of course, if it's an undisturbed buffer, then none of those things would be permissible.
So when we stipulate a 25-foot buffer, it's for a reason, and with this backing up to Arden Lake, which I've worked with the Arden Lake subdivision in the past when the RSL was being built on Bell's Ferry, and we had buffers with that as well for that property. So if a tree dies in an undisturbed buffer, or is damaged, or dead, or property. So if a tree dies in an undisturbed buffer, or is damaged, or dead, or a result of a storm, it can be removed. But does, and would they be required to replant what was damaged by storm, or?
If it was damaged by a storm and removed, typically, I would think we'd probably look at it on a case-by-case basis. But we typically, I don't think would require them to replant. Now, if it's a situation, obviously, the buffer is there typically intended to provide visual screening. So if that visual screening is lost, then that may be a situation where our staff works with situations like this and looking at how do we provide the screening that was desired.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Mr. Rowland, if my motion is to deny, can I give direction to the county arborist or community development to visit the site and work with them to be in compliance with the 25-foot buffer?
Yeah, but it'd be separate from the motion. I mean, the motion's either to approve or deny. And then you could also, your director of community development's here, you could ask them to provide them with guidance, yes.
In the same motion, or separate? You said separate?
Separate, yeah.
All right.
Could not be a motion. It doesn't have anything to do with, you know, just give them direction.
Okay. Like a clerk's note or something? Okay. I would like to make a motion to deny other business item number 24.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion passes five zero.
And I would also like to request community development, code enforcement, and the county arborist to visit the site, to let them know what they need to do to come into compliance and restore that 25-foot buffer.
Yes, ma'am. We'll be glad to do that with code enforcement. And as we've had other instances where buffers like this have been disturbed, then we'll, our arborist will work with the property owner to come up with the right mix of vegetation to achieve the screening that's desired.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, I believe our zoning here is adjourned, so you can talk to the commissioner after our hearing. Sir, sorry. No, sir, sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. You speaking over us does not work to your advantage in any way. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Our meeting is officially adjourned.